This is the Board of Education Full Board Meeting on December 11th, 2019. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to get started?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichak.
Here.
Joseph Koma.
Here. And Sue, will you please make sure that we had been properly posted with the media?
Yes, we have.
Well, thank you for doing that. I'd like to take a few minutes to reflect on the events that took place on Monday, December 2nd, at Waukesha South and Waukesha North. We commend our students, staff, and administration, as well as the Waukesha Police Department and our SROs for their quick response times and tremendous life-saving efforts. This was a total community effort, and we're very fortunate that no lives were lost. At Waukesha South, nearly 1,500 people responded appropriately. All the planning, training, and drilling prepared us well for situations like this. It should be noted that everyone was safe during this incident. Some mistakes may have been made, but those were minor and will be used to improve our planning processes. This was a stressful situation that many people experienced differently. 1,500 people never execute something perfectly all of the time in a real-life situation. Hence, the reason for the continued debriefing process and the refinement in our practices. We continue to provide counseling at the schools to help the students with the healing process, and our thoughts and prayers are with them. As we move forward, our students are being reminded to say that if you see something, say something. And that was done this time. This is not easy for any of us. As our community continues to heal, our hope is that understanding and patience will be demonstrated towards each other as the facts of the events are learned, processed, and made public. May God bless this community. We're going to switch things around just a little bit due to some timing conflicts for folks. We're going to move Item F in front of bright lights. So could our students from Waukesha South, Nicole and Shafik? Shafik?
Yeah.
Did I say that right?
That was perfect.
Come on forward. Please let us know what's happening.
Right. All right, so, hi. We're presenting here on behalf of Waukesha South High School. My name is Shafik Sis. I'm the President of the Student Council Executive Board.
I'm Nicole Swatelski. I'm Head of Public Relations of Student Council, and we're both seniors at South.
Welcome.
Thank you. Firstly, we wanted to mention that the Waukesha South was named avid school-wide site of distinction, which is, basically, it's 70% of the teachers use the WICHER strategies, and we have a lot of highly-trained teachers in the AVID program, and a lot of the students have post-secondary plans in the AVID program.
Speaking of the AVID program, our AVID class of 2020 was pretty successful, as you can tell by those stats up there. We had 88 AP classes taken by 29 students, only one of which had not taken an AP class. And 100% of those 29 students claimed that AVID had made them a better student. So, that's positive.
In the Engineering Academy, it was the second-highest ACT scores of the state, and it was named one of Newsweek's Top STEM High Schools for 2020.
And now, in terms of our AP testing, how many people are taking AP tests at our school? We had 822 people register for AP tests this year, and this year we have 135 more people with 957 AP tests.
Nice.
It's the highest out of the district for AP tests. So, for another Engineering Academy, a student, Jacob, he went to the Waukesha Education Foundation at a gala, and he spoke on behalf of the Engineering Academy.
And on the topic of the Engineering Academy, we had some of our female Engineering Academy students participate in a FEMA tour where they got to tour the FedEx, FedEx Metal Era and SPX. Kind of a cool opportunity.
And then there's some pictures of them touring the various sites.
All right. And now, moving on to our athletics and to activities.
So, for football, our team won two games this year. We won Homecoming versus West Dallas Hale. And Janesville, we won 41-20. That was the last game of the season. And also, our head coach, Coach Rabel, was diagnosed with testicular cancer, so a lot of the students rallied behind him, and we made T-shirts that we all wore to a game, and we raised $3,000 to give to him and his family for his fight.
And for boys soccer, we had a win this year against Waukesha North, 2-1, and we had four athletes this year honored as runner-ups for the All-Conference Awards.
So, for boys volleyball, the participation was up this year from previous years, and it was a very young team, so there's a lot of upcoming talent in the program. And we also hosted a tournament with 16 teams, which was a very large tournament, and it was a success.
And now to girls volleyball, we had our girls team, which won our first round of regionals. That's a bueno thing.
For girls swimming, they placed fifth at state, and they also had, two people got second at state. We had Abby Carlson in the 200-meter freestyle, and we had a girls relay win, got second.
For girls tennis, we had one singles participant move on to state, Ally Gardner, and then we had one doubles team, Jess Craganbrink and Gay Scanlon participate in the state tournament in Madison.
For boys and girls cross-country, that was also a very young team, so there's a lot of underclassmen at our school that are doing really well. The top three runners on Boys Varsity were Noah Kulas, Owen Antheline, and Noam Rose, and two out of which are freshmen, so they're very good. And then for the girls at conference, all of the girls on the cross-country team PR'd, so they finished the season very strong.
As for girls golf, we hosted the WIAA Regional and finished fifth place out of eight teams and placed fourth overall in our conference. And one of our students, Natalie Schneider, was all-conference and qualified for the WIAA sectional. It's cool for her.
For cheerleading, we increased involvement to 56 athletes from our fall to winter. And this Saturday, there's the South Side Showdown, which is just a competition where students from all over the state come and compete, and then, like, they compete their performances.
We have some cheerleading clinics there as well. It's a fun time. And as for our HOSA, we have a Pennies for Patients Initiative, which is something they're starting, where they have little boxes for each of the homerooms, and each person in the homeroom is asked to donate some money to Children's Hospital Pediatric Cancer Patients. So, it's a cool little initiative they're starting. And last summer, we had many students in our HOSA program make it to the Nationals Tournament, which was held in Florida.
For band, we had the Fall Marching Show titled Buccaneer Rhapsody. We also hosted March Fest, which is the largest competition outside of the state competition. So, we had, I think, like, 16 or 17 different bands from around the state come and perform. More recently, we marched in the Holiday Parade, and there's a concert tonight at 7:00 right now.
All right. And for choir and orchestra, we have an upcoming concert next week, Wednesday, on December 18th. They're going to be preparing for the state solo and ensemble competition in the spring, so many students are going to be preparing their own pieces and going to compete individually. And next Thursday, on December 19th, we're going to have a tour of the middle schools, where they're going to be able to go to all the different middle schools and kind of share the talent with prospective students.
For our decathlon team, they advanced through the first two rounds of the local and then regional competitions to qualify for state, and it's the first time in five years that we've had an academic decathlon program, so we're looking forward to progressing that.
And this past Saturday, we hosted a Santa's Breakfast, so that was kind of a pancake breakfast for Santa, where kids were invited to come and enjoy a jazz band and pancakes and Santa, and I don't know what else you need. That's kind of everything right there.
So, for Student Council, we had the Starry Night Homecoming in October, and then we also had South Fest on Homecoming, the football game night, and that's just a community involvement where we set up in the gym, and there's different clubs running, like, different booths for kids, and it's just a fun time. And then we have next week our Winter Spirit Week that we do every year to get kids excited for the holiday break.
And this year, we had our one-act play, "At the Bottom of Lake Missoula," Make It State. We won several awards. We had a directing award for Alison Shambarek, an ensemble award, which is an award just recognizing the ensemble for exemplary performance, and we had two outstanding acting awards. Awarded Savannah White and Helias Lang, two of the leads in that show.
And also, in the drama department, we had our fall play, "12 Angry Jurors," which is a drama. That was in early November. And then, we also just had Pippin Auditions, which is our winter musical, so that is in late February coming up.
And here we have a picture which the Waukesha South High School Booster Program posted after the events of Monday. This picture has been shared all over social media and has been put on shirts, which are now being sold. And so...
Yeah, the proceeds of the shirts go to the police department for the SROs program. Yeah, so, that's all.
Well, thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thank you for your time.
We have some questions for you.
Okay.
Yes, Diane?
I don't have a question, but I have an affirmation that Jake did a great job at our Evening for Education, representing the Engineering Academy.
Good. Thank you. I'll tell him you said that.
Yes, Bill.
I want to thank you for giving us so many positive things. It's very important that we hear that. One thing I want to share with the board is that when we talk about Jake and your robotics team, they're playing this week, Saturday at, or Sunday.
Saturday, yeah. I think it's Saturday.
Wouldn't you know, I'd forget that, right? We'll check. This weekend, they're going to be at North High School in the regionals, or sectionals, or whatever they call it. So, that's important. But I do want to compliment you on your presentation and the important things that we know are going on, but sometimes we need to be reminded, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Always good to look at the positives.
So, I see South on a real upswing. The athletic programs are seeing a higher level of participation, and soccer program has really been relaunched under the new coach.
Yeah.
And I was impressed with watching the football team play this year when we were invited. I thought they were a team that was really developing some good skills and would win a couple of games, and they did. And they'll get better as time goes on. The other sports, I don't know quite as well, but I can really see that South has teamed up. And then, one other comment I'd like to make, on the day that the thing happened, I was watching TV, and it was really impressive how the students handled themselves in front of the TV cameras. All of them spoke very positive about being able to handle the situation and having their training. It reflected very well on the school and on the community in the way the kids themselves handled themselves, and it was just very impressive to watch.
Thank you.
Are either of you... Oh, go ahead, Karen. No, after you.
Thank you.
I'll wrap things up.
Okay, thank you. When... Okay.
I'm...
I want to try to pronounce her name. It's Nicole, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And Shafik Sis.
Shafik Sis.
That's close. Okay. When you talked about the South Fest, I just wanted to give a shout-out because Mr. and Mrs. Bauer are here, and they do so much for our booster club and for South Fest, and I just wanted to say thank you. We all appreciate how much they do. And what are your plans in the future?
Plans for the school personally?
With your education as far as after high school, or trades, or just into the workforce, what would you like to do?
So, personally, I have a couple of choices. I'm not quite centered in yet, but I think I'm either looking at majoring in mathematics, which is something that I've been interested since elementary school, or kind of majoring in, like, more of an acting, taking an acting route. So, two very different routes, but two routes I'm very passionate about either way, so...
I'm looking to major in political science and possibly go to law school, or environmental science. That's also, like, two different routes. So, yeah, I'm looking to go far away to college, not in Wisconsin.
Place warm. It was warm.
Yes, Cory?
I'll make it brief. Excellent job today. I know it's not easy, but you impressed all of us, and I'm sure the people in the audience as well. Glad to hear your plans for the future, particularly glad about the law school. Vermont Law School has a fantastic environmental law program, and they have a charred student that runs right through the middle of it, so I almost went there, but I didn't, so... But, yeah, great job. And I did want to touch, not to be duplicitous, but I was at a function last night, and someone asked me about what's one of the best things you've seen in the district. I said, "Well, it's our students." And I happen to remember the gentleman that spoke, or your student, that spoke at the WEF Dinner, and it was Jacob, and I couldn't remember his name, but they asked me, "What did you see?" I said, "I saw his future sitting in front of him." He was in a room of, I don't know how many, a couple hundred people, and he spoke exceptionally well. He conveyed a great message, and I remember talking that night and last night, and I'd really love to see where that student is in about 10 years. And that goes for you guys, too. So, South has been great. Good job, and best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Just real quick, are either of you in band?
I am.
You know, March Fest, how did that go?
It was really fun. It's always a good time.
Yeah.
It's a big competition, and it's nice to see a lot of kids come.
So, when my, one of my daughters was in band a few moons ago, the one that graduated in 2010, and Laura, at the time, I believe there were, we were pushing six or seven bands to come to March Fest. We were happy with that, and I think you said you had 16 or 17?
Yeah, we had 16 or 17.
That's phenomenal.
Yeah, it's really big.
So, what time did you start?
It's a later competition, so we start at 4:00, and then awards end at around 10:30.
Yeah, it was a long night.
Yeah, it's a lo... And we get there at, like, 8:00 AM, because we have to set up all day, too.
Well, that's great to see the marching band program thriving itself. Fantastic. So, yes, Kurt?
I just, you know, we make so much comments about Jake. You know, his parents and his grandparents are both Waukesha people, and both of them, I believe, are employees of the school district. His grandpa, I saw him after the talk. You couldn't find a prouder grandpa in the entire city of Waukesha. It was pretty amazing. So, we produce great kids at South, and he's just an example.
So, thank you. Thank you. We'll see you in a few months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our bright lights. This month, we have the Principal of E-Achieve, Rick Nettesheim. Rick always has good stuff to share with us.
And I brought a team with me today, so we're just going to set the stage here. We'll take it back down when we're done. You guys pull the chairs up. So, I'd like to introduce you to the team, and they're going to take it away. So, Tom Demers, these are all of our elementary, this is our whole elementary team minus our music teacher. So, Tom Demers, and Brianna Stover, and Lisa Diamondopolis. And with that, Lisa is going to take the microphone, and she's going to... We also have with us students who are going to be sharing just for a minute each about their experience at E-Achieve. We have one who's streaming live, virtually. We have one who has a recording, and one who's here in person, which I think is an excellent representation of how we do school at E-Achieve. So, with that, Lisa, take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Rick, and good evening, everybody. So, this is one of my current students right now. Can you give us a wave, Jackson?
Jackson, can you hear us?
Can you give us a wave?
There we go.
Okay. Hi. So, I'd like you guys, I'll let Jackson do the talking here tonight. This is Jackson, our current third grader at E-Achieve.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, buddy. What do you want to tell them?
Tell them to hold on.
Hold on. Can you hear Mrs. D? Hold on a second, we couldn't hear you. Check your volume. Turned all the way up?
I have to...
Nope.
Check the...
That it's through? Or do I turn this off?
Sorry about this.
It's a very quiet classroom, Lisa, that you run.
Yeah, you guys are going to be like, "She doesn't want to talk."
Can you hear us, Jackson?
Can you hear? Put a thumbs up if you can hear us.
Jackson, can you hear me now? We can't hear you, so I'm going to disconnect right away from now. Can you hear us? Jackson, can you hear me?
There we go.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Do you need the presentation to be able to see what you wrote?
We did have, like, writing, but...
Do you want to go see this? Yeah. Perfect.
Let's just use my writing.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
We'll make it nice and big.
There we go. Got it? See? It's even easier for everybody.
You're ready.
Okay.
My name is Jackson Bean, and I am in 3rd grade from beautiful and snowy Superior, Wisconsin. My family chose E-Achieve Academy because I had kidney transplant as a baby, and virtual school helps to prevent me from getting sick, as keep me out of a hospital. My favorite part is seeing my friends and teachers in front of insane virtual classrooms. Each classroom gives me more time with family, and I learn at my own pace.
Thank you. Are you in your dummies already? Yes, we do. Bye, buddy. Thank you so much. So, one of the next slide. So, one of the things that Jackson talked about was being able to connect with all of our students, and not only do we connect in our classroom time in what we call e-sessions, but we have, we do small group time, where we do targeted, small-group instruction with them. And then, as you can see in up on the board, that's actually one of, a screenshot of one of our small groups, where we use Zoom and the interactive features, so that we can read a text together and annotate together and discuss. And next, representing the academy is Luke Okane. And this is, so we've used a Zoom, which we use every day, every week, and this is a pre-recorded video, another platform that we also use throughout the week with students. So, we'll play it. Are you going to play it through there and flip it? Okay.
We're going to read it for you. I'll put it back up on the board, because it looks like it's there on video. All right, Jackson, we'll see you later, okay, buddy?
Thank you, Jackson.
I'll see you inside.
I'm waiting to be...
What a cool kid.
All right, well, let's move on to Michael then.
Yes, let's do it. Okay. Dave, the presentation. So, a third way that we get to know our students is we also do family outings. We meet up and we're together in person, and so Michael's representing that part of the program and platform. So, this is Michael, a current 5th grader with us at E-Achieve.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Michael Wilcox. So, I am very interested in a lot of things. You might be wondering how I got so interested in learning. Oh, thanks to E-Achieve. The main thing that brought me to E-Achieve was for the fact I was bullied in the Milwaukee Public Schools systems. Furthermore, I was not very challenged with the learning, so, and I became bored. I also have medical conditions, and with the school, I can't get to my medical checkups. So, then I moved on to E-Achieve. Now, since I am online school, I have time to make my own, you know, my own schedule, so I have time, so I don't have to stress out, and I can have time for my medical checkups. You might be wondering, hmm, what do I like best about E-Achieve? That's a tough question, because I like everything about it. The teachers are excellent. I feel I thought I was cutting edge of STEM learning. Thanks to Mr. Demers, right here, I have become a better at science, social studies, and math. I love math right now. And I have be... Wait, I already read that part. And thanks to Ms. Stover and Ms. D, I'm going to become a better reader, writer, and I'm now better at words. And thanks to Ms. Hauser and her passion, I now have a long obsession with music. And I appreciate my fellow classmates and students, because I actually sometimes learn from them, too. The list goes on. Freedom in education also allows me to go on vacation that works with my parents' schedule, because no matter where I am, I can always be studying, because as long as I have a computer or any device and internet, I can always do my work. So, I'm working from everywhere. It gives you a greater appreciation for life and the world we live through, culture that we share with this world of people and animals. Thank you.
All right, so the last, real quick thing that we want to touch on before you can ask questions. One of the big things that we do is teaming with our families. It's very fluid. We work with each student. We work with parents much more closely than I would say probably any of us ever did in a classroom, because they are working with us to educate their kids. So, we always use this tool as kind of the three pillars with schools, students, and parents, and that's going to equal success. Does anyone have any questions for any of us, including Michael?
Kurt?
So, Michael, how long were you in the Milwaukee Public Schools system?
For, it was, the Milwaukee Public Schools system was like my first school.
Okay. How long were you there?
First, I was in some preschool, then...
What, a year and a half?
Year and a half in preschool.
Oh, you can give me the long answer if you want.
Besides, I was in year and a half in monastery.
Okay. And why did you choose, why, who chose E-Achieve? Was it you or your parents?
Well, before E-Achieve, there was another thing called K-12. That one was a bit too complicated for my age at the time, so that's why we switched to E-Achieve. And like I said in my speech, I was unfortunately bullied at the Milwaukee Public Schools.
So, your parents made the choice for K-12, and then you made the choice for E-Achieve? Is that what happened?
We did K-12 first. We tried that route, and then...
I'm thinking of for that one.
And then, when we decided that maybe socialization, like...
A better route, so we tried, we went to, we tried a monastery school setting.
Mm-hmm.
And then, from there, it started off well, and then, as things kind of turned, because we had to watch him very closely for all his medical conditions, and then, you know, first the bullying started mentally, and then physically, to a point to where, that we had to contact the police, and then, once the police got involved, then the principals got involved, and they're like, they kind of took offense to, "Why are you calling this the police on my school?" kind of thing. So, it wasn't, and then, after that, things kind of went really south really fast, so it was really through, we had a liaison through Children's Hospital in Milwaukee that set us up with E-Achieve. We're sort of in the middle, at the end of the school year, and she contacted E-Achieve right away and stuff. Ms. Stover was the first teacher that Michael had any contact with and stuff. From going from a bullying situation to a...
Year and a half in preschool.
Oh, you can, you can give me the long answer if you want.
Besides, I was in year and a half in Montessori.
Okay. And, and why did you choose, why, who chose E-Achieve? Was it you or your, or your parents?
Well, before E-Achieve, there was another thing called K-12. That one was a bit too complicated for my age at the time, so that's why we switched to E-Achieve. And like I said in my speech, I was unfortunately bullied at the Milwaukee Public Schools.
So, your parents made the choice for K-12 and then you made the choice for E-Achieve? Is that what happened? Yeah.
We did K-12 first, we tried that route, and then...
I'm thinking for that one.
And then when we decided that maybe socialization, like the...
A better route, so we try, we went to, we tried a Montessori school setting. And then from there, it started off well and then as things kinda turned, because we had to watch him very closely for all his medical conditions. And then, you know, first the bullying started mentally and then physically to a point to where, that we had to contact the police and then once the police got involved, then the principals got involved and they're like, they kinda took offense to, why are you calling this, the police on my school, kinda thing. So, it wasn't, and then after that, things kinda went really south really fast, so it was really through, we had a liaison through Children's Hospital in Milwaukee that set us up with E-Achieve. We're sort of in the middle, at the end of the school year, and she contacted E-Achieve right away and stuff. And Ms. Stover was the first teacher that Michael had up, that had any contact with and stuff. Going from a bullying situation to nature situation, that it really helped him bridge the gap. You know, then what happened the next year was that he switched to another teacher, his next teacher was Mrs. D. And for her, so, now, when we were driving here today, I asked you, what did Mrs. D mean to you, how did Mrs. D help you go from that next thing to...
I would like to say something. I found it on, like, I did research and I found that E-Achieve online. What impressed me was that I can see different kids with like different conditions. Because my son has double inlet left ventricle, that means three chamber heart, something to see different kids with different conditions, it really impressed me very much. Just some pictures impressed me. I said, maybe that's the right school for my son. Because in this school, there is kids like with conditions, with kids that are bullied, that's really. And I had the support because I'm from Bulgaria, I don't have family here, and Ms. D and Ms. Stover really, they support me so much because I didn't have any kind of support. You know, I, I don't know anything about the online school and without them, without Ms. D, without Ms. Stover and Ms. Demers, I couldn't do it. Now, really, I'm very strong and I always push my son to do his best and I'm very grateful to be in that.
And, oh yeah, sorry for the coincidence, there was a few, my dad accidentally made a few mistakes on there. And, and I'm sorry that I, I was a little bit nervous.
Okay, just real quickly, I mean, Mr. Colmo and myself and Mr. Baumgart, I think, are the three remaining board members. That means we're old, that started E-Achieve way back when. I think Mr. Colmo and I were probably pretty strong advocates for it at the time and we've had to make some changes over the years. And one of them was going, we've had to renegotiate the contract a couple of times when K-12 was involved in it. And then eventually we decided we could go without K-12. One of the things that we do unique to our school is we have our professional teachers. We try to operate it like our brick and mortar schools. It should be an equivalent at least to that. And quite often it's Superior because there's more scope offered than E-Achieve. So, our biggest problem is getting our message out. You guys probably knew nothing about E-Achieve when you first, you just stumbled on it. And one of the ways of getting our message out is having young men like Michael here step forward and tell his story in such an elaborate way. So, we're gonna have to get a sign off to get you, so you can use you for promotion, Michael.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem, right?
I, I thought we were taking a commercial there for a while.
There's a lot of things out there we do as a family, we learn as a family and stuff, you know, we try to incorporate that way of everything. So, when we write papers or whatever we have to do, we always look for fun facts and stuff to make education interesting before we do the bullying.
Yes.
And we let Michael take the lead and, you know, by being on the cutting edge of technology, we're able to do a lot more things. The technology has your advantage to learn more.
You need to use the microphone or the audience can't hear you.
Brings the world closer to what, you know, of what we do and stuff as, in the world that we live in and stuff, you know. Mike always takes the initiative of what he has to do and we're proud of it, you know, it's just, and education, if you, if you're not, you don't have education, you don't have anything.
Yes, we appreciate you sharing. Are there other questions from, from board members? Yes, Karen?
It's not just a question, but I just wanted to say, Michael, you just shine. You shine. You are just this burst of joy and energy. When I think of words, I just think of, you're just gonna flourish. You already are. And we are very blessed to have you here. I'm so glad you found us. And I can see that E-Achieve doesn't just help you, like your dad said, it helps your whole family. It's just kind of helped you all. And so, thank you to all your teachers, to Tom, Brianna, and Lisa, and to Mr. Nettesheim and everybody who supports you. And I, one question I had was, is it hard for you to keep up with the work because you're not at school and no one's saying, get your work done? But I bet you are up and at that computer before your parents are and you've probably got the day's work ready to go and...
It has a touchscreen, you know.
We're just really proud of you and we're just really glad that you're with us. You're welcome. And come back someday. Do, yeah, just drop in and every year and just tell us how you're doing and we wanna hear from you. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Well, Michael, when you like so many things, I think you might be an elementary school teacher when you grew up because these folks like so many things about learning too. But thank you for your presentation, Michael. You did a great job. Thank you to all for being here tonight.
And also on the second note, I'm very good at geography too.
All right. Study those glaciers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick and team. Now, we have our, our employee recognition next and Sharon Thede's gonna follow up. And Sharon, you got a tough job right now. But this is a pretty good celebration too.
What's happening? Yeah, I could. Hi, good evening. This is a fun part of my job that I get to do. So, the Employee Recognition Award for December of 2019 is going to be presented this evening to Jadia Kirk. So, Jadia, could you stand up? So, Jadia started in the School District of Waukesha in 2015. Her nominators begin by saying that Jadia Kirk goes above and beyond in her duties as an ESL teacher at Hawthorne in supporting teachers and students, especially through the recent consolidation transition. Jadia has been instrumental in systems and practices that support the instructional growth and student outcomes. She has been part of the leadership team, supporting teachers to engage, teach, and ensure excellence for linguistically talented students. She models, coaches, and mentors and leads systems so that teachers consistently have support to deepen their practice. Jadia puts the needs of the organization and the children it serves before her own. She steps into roles as needed and has been very flexible and dynamic to appro-, has a dynamic approach to ensure learning. She uses her role as an ESL teacher to coach, mentor, and co-serve with her colleagues to increase their capacity to meet the needs of all students. At Blair and now at Hawthorne, this means that most children reach English proficiency and Spanish proficiency before leaving 5th grade. She steps into leading school-wide professional development, sharing the leadership and the vision of the school, the culture, and the climate. She also commits her time and expertise to write curriculum, lead within the bilingual and ESL teams, and supports the growing capacity of other literacy and math specialists in becoming even more effective in their roles. Her students shared the following. She's kind, she gives us chances, and she does things right. She trusts us to make good choices and holds us accountable for them. Another student said she takes her time, reasons with us, and we look up to her. We can talk to her. She shows us the kind of people we want to be. As an organization, we are grateful for employees like Jadia Kirk, who we see, who sees education as the key to success. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I'd like to congratulate Jadia on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award. Congratulations.
Okay, I will try not to be a commercial. But I just wanted to say thank you to Dee Garcia. She has an amazing team of ESL and dual-language leaders who are, like Sharon said, writing curriculum and just coaching and, and leading the district in inequity for our multilingual students. I also wanted to say, the transition from Blair to Hawthorne has not been a smooth or easy one, but we are persevering and we need your continued support as we do that. As Dee mentioned, we are facing struggles every day and stepping into roles that are not necessarily ours. I did step away from my coaching and ESL role for three weeks to teach in a 5th grade classroom dual-language so that our scholars could have consistency and high expectations and a familiar face in front of them. And that's just one example of things that our staff is doing on a daily basis to make sure that our scholars have the learning experience that they deserve. And lastly, I can't leave without, sorry, I'm pregnant and, without thanking Adica Cruz-Fern, although she's not with us and she's moved on. She was instrumental in my learning and my leadership and just wouldn't feel right to not thank her. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. We're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. As has been past practice, individuals will be limited to three minutes. At the two and a half minute mark, Amanda will give you a signal and if you could wrap up in the next 30 seconds, we would appreciate that. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, if you have not done so already, please silence your phones. And our first speaker is Mary Beth Danielson, followed by on deck is Katie Druffs.
If there's only three of us, we'll be really fast. I'm Mary Beth Danielson. My husband and I have lived in Waukesha for just four years and we belong to Waukesha's United Unitarian Universalist Congregation. And this past Sunday was unlike any church service I have ever been to, which is why I'm here tonight. Our joys and concerns, which usually take five minutes, took over the entire service. It was a half hour of people responding to the events of the shooting of December 2nd and that is why I'm here. We have about 80 people in our congregation, many of whom are teachers, mental health professionals, and many parents. Several of the parents have kids who have mental and developmental challenges and/or who are kids of color. And their fear for their kids' futures was real and our sanctuary that, that morning. And I realized, I'm sort of a writer and I would come here tonight and try to bring to you really briefly what, what we talked about. And Jennifer will talk, talk more about her experience. But I wanted to let you know, I tutored kids from difficult neighborhoods in Chicago for more than 20 years. When we moved to Racine, I worked for 10 years. My job was working in the Racine County Jail, leading a social services program there. I worked with hundreds of incarcerated and recently released men and women and I think I have learned something about how people fail and how they succeed and it is really important to me. It's simple, you know this, so do I. People need people and people need well-run programs led by professionals who have enough time and resources to do what they know how to do. Since I moved to Racine, I have, I became a volunteer at Whittier Elementary School. I've been there now for three years. I volunteer one morning or afternoon a week. There is a lot going on there. The teachers there are, and the aides are amazing, they're consistent, they're patient. I have learned so much and I have become very, very impressed by what, how aides work with kids, especially kids who have special education needs. These adults are kind, they're steady, they're professional, and I want to tell you, hire more of them. The difference in a class when I am in there, if there are enough extra people there to work with the kids who have big issues...
30 seconds?
The difference in what kids learn is incredible. So, that's what I want to say tonight. As you address, and I know it's ongoing, what to do about the violence that came to, to all, to all of us, talk to your people who are already doing this. Make sure you talk to your teachers and your teacher's aide. They have so much to tell you, as you well know. Start with Brett Hart, Tyrone Smith's teacher, you know, you're gonna be looking at security systems. They may or may not keep students safe, but security systems never help a troubled kid get better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Katie Druffs, followed by Jennifer Biriger?
Byrger.
Byrger? Sorry about that.
Hello.
Hi, Katie.
First of all, I wanted to thank the administration and the board so much for slowing down the process of changing the middle school schedules. We now have a committee in place in which teachers' voices from all three schools are being heard. And we had our first meeting and at that first meeting, we got into groups to figure out what our top priorities were in creating a new schedule. And the teachers from all three schools said that we want the 6th graders to be able to try all of the different electives before, before they choose their future electives for 7th and 8th grade. We wanna be able to try everything, not just two, before they start making choices. All of the electives are important and we were really excited to have a voice in that. That's not the only priority, but it was the one that concerned me the most. So, it's gonna be a difficult process, but we're excited to move forward. And this is the first time in my 30 years of teaching that I was able to volunteer to be on a committee like this, so, and have a voice in the scheduling, so I really, really appreciate it. Secondly, I just wanted to say, in, in talking about how to improve learning and test scores, that teachers have a lot of ideas. And, you know, we've heard you in watching the, you know, the board meetings say, you know, we wanna hear from the teachers. What do the teachers think? And we really want to communicate with you. And, but a lot of people are a little intimidated with this type of procedure. So, we were thinking maybe a less formal way to be able to actually communicate with the board. So, the board and the administration and teachers can actually talk. And there is some confusion in recent years about insubordination, will I be fired if I give my opinion? So, so many teachers feel that they've been, you know, discouraged from voicing their opinions. So, I think that's something that we need to talk about so, so we know what can we say and what can we not say? But we really think that more communication is better.
Seconds?
Because we are, we're all in this together and we all wanna improve our, our kids' learning. And, you know, one, one idea we had was, you know, why, why isn't there a teacher seat here? You know, because there were some questions that you were talking about last time and we knew the answers to them and we had already had our three minutes, so we couldn't answer that for you. But, you know, maybe a, you know, an elementary and a secondary, not voting position, but just be able to have a part of the discussion. So, and I also have a handout for you for what I was gonna say last time when I said I would come back about the middle school electives and I couldn't project this time, so.
Can you give that to Sue and Sue will make sure that each of us gets a copy of that?
So, again, thank you for your time and thank you for your help in, in giving us a voice.
Thank you, Katie. Jennifer, followed by Christine DeMaster?
I got a whole different perspective of school, listening to all the positives. And you'll understand, hopefully, why I'm gonna give you a different perspective. Not necessarily negative, but different. I don't presume to know how hard each of you have been working and processing the most effective way to keep our teachers and our kids safe. These times are most challenging in many areas. The lockdown at South epitomizes many of society's challenges. Gun safety, response protocol to threats, special needs interventions, society's failings to people of color. I wish to offer my perspective as a parent of our sibling group of special needs children. I was one of the many parents anxiously trying to find my daughter after the school lockdown. I am very grateful to her supervisor in the cafeteria for keeping her safe and helping her to maintain. She is a young adult with special needs. Yes, yet, I am here to advocate for... He has been in an appropriate school environment for the past five years, which means for him, not in regular middle school or high school. As grateful as we are to the Waukesha School District, and we are, this means that he had to fail in regular school settings before alternatives were finally agreed to. Failure does not build self-worth. Would Tyrone have fared better in a smaller alternative school setting? If yes, why was he in a larger population with all its chaos and noise? Could the process for deciding the best environment for these kids be further evaluated? Did he have obstacles in his life that put him at a disadvantage from getting the help and direction he needed? Tyrone, according to the paper, is much younger than his 18 years. Kids with, so is my son. Kids with emotional and behavioral developmental delays do not process their emotions in appropriate ways. Something triggered his anxiety, and it overwhelmed him, and he exploded. So here's Tyrone. He has policemen trained in shooter situations, but probably not trained in childhood thinking or special needs. Pointing guns at him and telling him to request, "Take your hand out of your pocket and," I'm sorry, and nothing in your hands. I didn't even do the two things. Anyway, any of us would be shaking and flustered in that situation, but capable of processing the requests and knowing the consequences if you don't comply. A simple two-step task, did you say 30 seconds? Oh, sheesh. A simple two-step task is beyond some people's understanding who have cognitive challenges. One step done, now what do I do? What's going on? What am I supposed to do? I'm not sure what's going on.
Please wrap up.
This young person is a square peg who has been squeezed into mainstream round holes, and he doesn't fit.
Okay.
So because of his disability and being overwhelmed and over anxious, he made...
Thank you, Jennifer.
I'm almost, can I? Please. He's totally unaware of the far-reaching consequences of his actions. And here we are, rather than finally appropriately helping this square peg, who we are going to add, we are going to instead add him to the school-to-prison pipeline, where money talks and black doesn't. Chronologically, 18; cognitively, society is imprisoning rather than intervening for a child. This should matter to us.
Okay.
It should matter to us, and I thank you for your time, and I went over because I talked too slow. Sorry. Keep that in mind, that's all I'm asking. There's other options for kids other than mainstreaming, streaming them where they don't belong.
Christine DeMaster, followed by Paul Reese.
Hi, I'm Christine DeMaster with Trilogy Consulting. I'm here this evening because I am the TIF consultant for the town of Waukesha. With me also is John Macy, who's the town attorney. So we just wanted to introduce ourselves and let you know that we're here this evening. We very much appreciated the opportunity to attend the facilities and finance committee meeting on Monday, and were able to present the proposal there and hopefully answer the committee's questions. The one last thing I just wanted to say is that town staff has been meeting and discussing some potential projects with two developers so far within the proposed district, one for expansion of an existing business, another one is looking at three potential sites for some senior housing within the district. So the town is very much looking forward to moving forward with this TIF district and being able to further develop and support these projects, as well as much other potential that the town sees for this district. Thank you.
Thank you. And Paul Reese, followed by Kimberly Coronado.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank God for our first responders and the actions that they take in their everyday, in their everyday job, that they stand up when no one else will, and they face evil when no one else is there to do it. I also want to thank superintendent's office, whoever sent me this, I've said it something at the Teaching and Learning Committee, but I want to say it again, thanks for sending me this. Also, at the Teaching and Learning, I was gonna talk about something else, but at the Teaching and Learning Committee, Amy Rebel gave a presentation on Wisconsin Forward, and I wanted to comment on that. It, again, deals with the testing, more testing, that deals with grades three through eight. Because of my talk, she talked a little bit about what, how the grading system is. She gave advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic, and it's a four-point scale. You know, we went from a 13 to a four point, which isn't, doesn't relay as much information. It may to teachers, but it doesn't to me. And they also talked about, in mathematics, well, it was science, they don't have anything to go back on. They have nothing, they were just gonna talk about last year because they have nothing to compare it to. I find that, just, I mean, the foundation of mathematics and science, and for that matter, the threat of society itself, is weights and measurements. Everything can be weighed and measured. A test is a measurement of knowledge. We know at this level what we want at third grade. Everything below that, you know, we can measure this. We can't say that we gave a new test, and now we don't know where the level is. In measurements, I'm a machinist, there's a book this big, it's my machinist handbook. It has every parameter in it, and it tells me everything I need to know. I can take a print from 1913 and make the same part today, because the masters remain the same. I have the same standards of measurement. It's always the same, it's always a constant, an inch is an inch. There are actually places in this world where they are kept in vaults, where measurements and weights are kept. Because if I tried to sell you this phone for an ounce of gold, and you came, went and measured it, and brought it to me, and I put it on my scale, and I said, "That's a half ounce," we'd have a problem. So we have a master that is able to tell us where we're at, and that's the point of this stuff. If we have a master and a set standard, then we can do things in life, and we can understand and we can communicate back and forth.
Seconds.
Not only through this time, but through all times. And when someone is trying to tell me they can't do that, that scares me, because someone's moving the master. Someone is altering the master, and that's what I fear. When you tell me you cannot compare something to past, that means that master is being elevated, or being changed. And it means that someone is getting shorted. There is a, someone is gaining and someone is losing here. And I fear it's our kids that are losing when we changing the master.
Thanks. Thank you, Paul. Kimberly?
My name is Kimberly Coronado. I have four children in the school district. I stand before you tonight, knowing what other families, like mine, have been through, and I continue to walk each day through. I will continue to use my voice and bring my concerns to you each month, as I have for the past several years. Even though, as a taxpayer and an involved parent, volunteer, I feel unheard and extremely disappointed that effective changes have not been made in our district. I am completely flabbergasted that today marks the 72nd day my son is not in school. This is unacceptable and deplorable. The unintended consequences of not supporting my children, other children with disabilities, children with trauma, and not providing earlier intervention is what unfolded on December This is a superintendent's worst nightmare. These words have been quoted in almost every single article that was written regarding the events that happened that day. These words were spoken from an administration that tells us, the taxpayers, that the main issue in our district is our damaged image. We made national news, we flexed our law enforcement muscles, and now we have the opportunity to work harder to ensure students and staff feel safe in our schools. We have the opportunity to repair our image. Everyone is watching us. How is this board going to finish writing the end of their story? We have a lot of work to do to address the trauma of our students face each day. We need to remain curious and not furious. We need positive school climates, immediately. Students with disabilities should matter just as much as the football team, the robotics team, the basketball team, and the coveted group of students who score 30 on their ACTs. We need to focus on improving access for everyone in our buildings to have mental health screenings, just like hearing and eyeglasses, and biometric screenings. We need to focus on prevention, using proactive, earlier interventions, screening for trauma, universal students and staff wellness programs, and trauma-sensitive school practices. We need to ensure all students have at least one positive adult relationship in their school, so they feel like they belong, and have opportunities to ask for help using models of mental health first aid and zero suicide. We need more transparency and shared power with parents to improve parent engagement. We need to ensure fairness, educational equity, continuous improvement plans based on restorative practices that repair relationships in each school. We need to be able to learn and practice and make mistakes. Families and students need to have renewed trust and good faith in our schools, that the right thing for each student will be done. We need actual teamwork to get to the happily ever after.
Can you wrap up, Kimberly?
We can, and we must do better for our students, families, and staff.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board tonight? Okay, moving on to our minute approval. We have just one set of minutes for approval, and that's for November 13th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I saw move.
Made by Diane, second by?
Second.
By Amanda. Any discussion? Corrections, changes? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Ditz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes 9-0, Sue. Moving on to our communications, we'll start with the superintendent's report given by the deputy superintendent, Joe Cook.
Thank you. Tonight, we do have a number of communications that have come in from around the state for things that have gone on in Waukesha. I will read a couple paragraphs here. On behalf of the Wisconsin High School Forensics Association, I extend congratulations to Waukesha South High School Director Allison Shamburuk and the cast of the play At the Bottom of Lake Missoula for their outstanding achievement at the 2019 State Theater Festival held November 21st through the 23rd at UW-Moarki. They received the All-State Award for their production commemorating their participation in the state festival. Additionally, the production earned the directing award, the ensemble award, outstanding acting by Savannah White as Pam, and Keleus Lang as Jim. Similarly, at Waukesha West, Director Nathan Bearish and the cast of the play Proof for their outstanding achievement at the festival. They received the Critics' Choice Award for their production representing an elite level of achievement at the state festival. Additionally, the production earned the directing award, ensemble award, crew award, outstanding acting by Reagan Carter as Catherine, Ian McBride as Hal, and Olivia Binnell as Claire. We had a number of physical education teachers, Corey Schwartz, Chris Mann, and Laura Kutz, who presented at the Wisconsin Health and Physical Education Convention. They extend their congratulations and acknowledgement for our staff. Further, the Board of Directors of Ploughshare, Fair Trade Marketplace, and Education for Peace would like to thank the Waukesha South Key Club members and student photographers who volunteered at the October 17th Fair Trade Fashion Show fundraisers. Students from the Key Club served as greeters, table assistants, kitchen staffers, auction runners, sales support assistants, and takedown crew members. Additionally, the photographers circulated throughout the evening photographing guests and activities, and their photos will become part of Ploughshare's online fashion show photo medley.
I think they're future Ploughshares.
Yes, yes, a lot of involvement there. And we also have a number of recognitions from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of the Classic Eight, Waukesha North High School for being the recipient of the Conference Sportsmanship Award for girls volleyball and girls golf, Waukesha South High School for being recipients of the Sportsmanship Award for boys soccer, boys cross-country, girls tennis, girls swim, and girls golf, and Waukesha West High School for being the recipient of the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for football, girls swim, and girls golf. And we're very appreciative of everybody's efforts and all of their involvement.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Moving on to our Waukesha Education Foundation report. Ms. Voight, I think you have something for us.
I do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Some good stuff.
Our Evening for Education that we heard about a little bit earlier this evening, held on November 14th, was an amazing success. We heard about Jake's presentation, which was just one small part of it. If you were not able to attend, I put a program at each of your desks that you can find out a little bit more about the details about the recognitions of our WEF partners, as well as the presentations from not only Jake, but Faith Lincecombe, representing the elementary school grant recipients in the district as well. This was our inaugural event, and kudos go to Kim Dove and Angela Allen for taking the lead in planning it. I placed the program for you to follow up with, and just want to speak, just in amazing terms, about the community's support. It was just outstanding. Let me share one example. Our 50-50 raffle winner was not only willing to give his winnings back as a cash donation to the foundation, he also asked his employer, and is getting that amount matched. So, but just that kind of, you know, outpouring of support was just hard to put into words, you know, how much we appreciate it. It was so successful, beginning tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock, we're gonna start planning next year's event, so it's going to be, start planning the second annual.
I thought there was a 30-day rule, that you had to wait 30 days after the event.
Well, we're, we're planning, starting tomorrow morning.
Overachievers.
At our December meeting, WEF formally thanked Les Paul Principal Rob Bennett for his six years of service on the WEF Board of Directors. Rob has taken the lead on our annual WEF Run-Walk and Wellness Fair, and we've been very appreciative of all of his efforts over those six years. I prepared another handout for each of us that you can take a look at, that was at your desk as well, about the 2018 WEF Grant Showcase. The, we celebrated that event on Saturday, and as you can see, the 29 projects enriched the lives of all students in the school district of Waukesha, from the littlest learner in the 4K program, developing fine motor skills that will lead to stronger writing skills, to the elementary students that were able to learn conflict resolution, self-regulation, and empathy development, to the high school students who see the new lighting at the auditorium at South, or those who benefit from the Bolt Buster in the West Auto Lab, or those who have a chance to walk the One Mile Nature Path at West, complete with its bridge and waterfall and memorial bench for my friend Terry Abraham. I think the $31,415 has been well-spent as an investment in the innovative projects that so many of our awesome staff across the district have put together. WEF would like to inspire more creativity through the Fund the Next Five program that I mentioned last month. WEF's Fund the Next Five is part of the Waukesha County Community Foundation's Caring Catalog. And at the link, that's bit.ly/fundthenextfive, the Caring Catalog's 14th entry is one to fund the next $5,000 in grants that come in, because we can't come even close to being able to grant all the requests that come forward. The Caring Catalog of 14 community programs will remain open until December 20th. So please consider making an end-of-year donation through the Caring Catalog, or by donating directly to the Waukesha Education Foundation to immediately impact the teachers and students of our district. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Always good. Great, great program, great foundation. Moving on to the Charter School and Program Report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Como. I guess we're having a positive night here, which we deserve. I have several things of very positive nature I'd like to share with you. One of the great things in the school district of Waukesha is to hear how we impact other entities, and I heard of such an event just by coincidence last month. The Project Lead the Way Summit Committee, which I'm not familiar, that's not local, that's national, selected Waukesha to do a presentation at the Summit Conference in San Antonio. Molly Habenschild, Nate Schmidt, and Andy Weber did the presentation. They covered such things as working with industry partners, engaging them in classes, the collaboration of Project Lead the Way with our MAID program, and exposing our students to real-world projects through connections with those industry partners. They were very well-received by the attendees, and they shared and tell me that they also gathered ideas as well as sharing ideas. So that was a big plus. Another highlight I encountered quite by accident over at Lowell one day, when Rachel had said, "You gotta get over here and see something." Before I got to leave the building, the North Avid teacher stopped me and says, "Come on along, let me show you something." And she took me back, and the North Avid students periodically come over to Lowell to work... So that was a big plus. Another highlight I encountered quite by accident over at Lowell one day when Rachel had said, "You got to get over here and see something." Before I got to leave the building, the North Avid teacher stopped me and says, "Come on along, let me show you something." And she took me back, and the North Avid students periodically come over to Lowell to work with the elementary kids. I happened to be there while they were working on reading with the elementary students, and it was fun to see both age levels were learning from this experience. I was very positive. Another item that came up recently, the Family Engagement Program. You may have noticed this in the most recent Connect or in your Friday packet. A literacy program for parents was conducted at so far at two of our schools, Banting and Hawthorne, and will be followed up with more, those will be followed up with the two more sessions in each of the groups. Mary Garcia Velez tells me that participation was strong, and she wouldn't be surprised to see it get stronger. This series focuses on the parent helping their child with literacy strategies that work at home. Topics include understanding literacy terms, this is for the parents, no, okay, understanding literacy terms, school resources, and engaging reading at home. Will also include 30-minute interactive reading sessions with the child by the parent and program facilitators. We're going to see more of that. I'm not sure of when or where or what other schools, but one of the priorities I think we've talked about in the past is getting parents involved in working with our kids when parents aren't really comfortable with it. And one more item, another really fun thing. In third grade at Whittier, the students are focusing on being an active citizen in their community, civic responsibilities, and how they can strengthen a community by their actions. Mrs. Hart, the principal, was the first speaker with the group, and they have invited several community members to come and speak, the third graders as well. Invited three board members, and I believe you're one of them, and Corey, you're the other one, and myself. It was fun. Honestly, working with third graders for an hour is quite good. Waukesha Mayor is going to be over there, Dimitri Beekman, our diversity manager, director, whatever we call it, I forgot, member of the Police Department is going to visit them, and representatives from the Waukesha Fire Department as well. By gaining perspective from many others, Whittier is hoping to continue the Political Science and Citizenship Unit with real example, real-life examples to strengthen learning and connections. And you mentioned the WEF project program. I had written that, that was worth sharing. And for several of us, if you didn't know about it, we had a fun day yesterday at South High School. They had cupcakes for all of the staff and all the kids over there. Amanda, I know you helped. And it was so delightful to visit around with the kids. And all I can say is, they were just marvelous. They were gracious, they were grateful, they thanked us, they ate the cupcakes. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our consent agenda. We usually start with the public gifts, so stack. Did we receive any gifts?
Yes. Excuse me, we received four gifts this month. Les Paul Middle School received $1,000 from Northwestern Mutual Matching Funds of the Omen family. Waukesha North High School received a 2006 Chevrolet Malibu with an estimated value of $1,500 from Stephen Froch. This will be used for automotive classes to learn about different vehicle systems and repair procedures. Horning Middle School received new furniture valued at $4,000 from Anna Wells. This is to be used in the flight program. The donor has two students currently in flight. And the final donation was for Waukesha South. They received $2,020 from ThermTech of Waukesha to be used for the boys soccer program.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you to all those who donated. Your generosity continues, and we're appreciative, and it's different kinds of giving too, to many different schools. So thank you, thank you for that. Your agenda, your consent agenda includes various categories for approval. There were no expulsions for this past month. Is there any other reason, or would a board member for any other reason like to set any other item aside for later discussion from the consent agenda? Okay. Mr. O'Brien, will you please present the consent agenda?
So earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of one resignation and one new teacher contract. The information was provided in your packet. I move the consent agenda to be approved as presented.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Dietz. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero, Sue. Thank you, Kurt. Moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Cook.
Thank you. Couple of things. Dr. Gray is at the National Avid Conference this week, and as we look at the impact, the positive impact that Avid is having on our system, you know, you saw a little bit of the data tonight from South, but we continue to hear from the schools, from teachers, from principals, we're seeing the results in the students, both from an avid schoolwide and an avid elective. And I'd like to take this time just to thank Jody and her team for their leadership on it, to Amanda Wagner, and all the work that's happening around Avid and our system and the impact that it's having across our, across our district. In the next week and a half before holiday break, our schools will be busy really keeping kids focused on learning as we get closer and closer to the winter break. If you are available, I'd encourage you to drop in and see both the seasonal cheer that's going on right now, but then to see how the kids are still engaging in their learning activities. It's a, it's a very busy time of year. The kids are very busy, and the teachers are working extra hard to maintain that engagement. As we, as a district, reflect on what happened a week and a half ago at South, we've had many, many calls from individuals in the community, from other school districts, from the media, from concerned parents. And I just want to let the board know that we will be spending the next several weeks, even in a month, debriefing this situation. We will be meeting with teachers and students who were involved. We will learn from their experience as we go forward. One of the key takeaways from that in, obviously, reading what's been out there, but in talking to people, is the idea of what, why did this situation, for as tragic as it was, go relatively well? And obviously, there's drills and there's procedures that we've put in place, but at the heart of it were relationships. There were the relationships that students had with teachers, that students had with the SRO there, that the teachers and the administration had. There was a level of trust there. That trust for some individuals has been built over time. They've had years to work together, but for a few key individuals in that, you know, our new staff with the students that they're working with, new students to our programs, new SRO to the building, a new principal to the building, that trust, that relationship has been established relatively quickly. You know, this event happens in December, they're together for three-plus months, and that's it. And we believe that that relationship that the staff and the students have at South and that strong community that is there not only helped them get through this event, but will help them through the healing and the processes we move forward. So we will keep you posted on how this debrief goes and the steps that we're taking. Know that it is not something that we're going to take lightly, nor are we going to try to rush it and do it quickly. We're going to make sure we do a thorough job. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, and thank you for your tireless effort and all of those of our staff, our students continuing to work through this. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our committee reports. That's where most of the heavy-duty lifting gets done. We rotate which committees actually present first, and this month, first up is the Policy Committee given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. You notice that I get to go first the night I don't have much to talk about? Okay, we do have three items that we'll share with you. We have no action items. First item, policy 0167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings. The Policy Committee discussed this policy at its November meeting and what each of the listed components in the policy mean. We are bringing it to the full board's attention tonight for discussion, and we will be following up with it at other committee meetings in the near future. I encourage you to go over that policy and look at some of the specifics in there, where we talk about the number of minutes and who can participate in the public participation, things like that. We need to just have everybody understand what the rules are there, and we're going to be talking about it. As a committee, we will probably be exploring some other options in how to arrange that. It's just been a discussion, barely a discussion item at this point, but there will be more on that. If somebody has a question or an issue about public participation, this might be a good time to share it with us so we can bring it to the committee.
Yeah, Kurt.
You know, I should have watched a Policy Committee meeting, I guess, on this because you guys probably had a good discussion on it at the.
Got started on a discussion, yes.
I think we do a good job at allowing the public, and we also make it clear that there are ground rules, and we do our best to enforce those ground rules, and sometimes people may skirt the edges. I don't think they do it intentionally, sometimes they do. I did read the policy when it came across, and one of the, was about being a resident of the school district. We've never really enforced that policy as being a requirement, and I don't think we should start now. So if we have to change the policy to allow what we have been doing for the past practice, then I assume that we'll do that because the policy restricts it, and we haven't been restricting it. So we can decide whether we want it restricted or not restricted, but it's, it'd be unfortunate because at TNL, for instance, some of our staff that came and spoke weren't residents of the school district, okay? And technically, under the policy, which we don't, we've never followed in that regard, they wouldn't have been allowed to speak, and I don't think that would have been good for us. So the more we allow the public to comment, even when we have people come in and say terrible things to us that don't live here or don't really care about Waukesha, so be it. We can put up with it. That's what, if you don't like being on the school board, then don't be on the school board.
Anybody else?
Corey. Sorry. Mr. O'Brien, I completely agree with you. I think I have learned from individuals who've presented to the board who live outside the district quite a bit. And just because they live outside the district doesn't mean their opinion is not important. Likewise, we've had individuals who work or live in the district bring individuals from outside the district. I think there was an alderman that came from Milwaukee, there was a gentleman that came from his private security company. We learned from those people, and I think it's important. So the more knowledge, the better. And also, the public participation at meetings, this is something I do feel strongly about. Not preaching to the board, I wouldn't be so bold, but we're elected officials. If 150 people want to come to one of our meetings, first of all, I'd be shocked, but I'd also be glad. And if they all want to speak for three minutes, I think it's our duty to sit here for whatever 150 times three is. And I think that's important. If people want to take the time out of their day to come and tell us what they think is important, we should sit here and listen. The policy, I would love it if we could respond to each presenter, but it's, I understand why that rule is there, it would be chaos. But I want to let the people know, and I can't speak for the fellow board members, but I'm sure they do, I can see them as we hear people. We write down your names, we hear it on, or we get it on the minutes. I write down what's talked about. A lot of us will come up and follow up with presenters afterwards. So it's an important, and I think one of the most very important, aspects of our meetings. If our citizens or non-citizens want to come and talk with us, I think we sit here as long as it takes. So it's not directly in the policy, but I think it's something we should consider. But as a whole, the communication is great. I love hearing from people, I love hearing from students particularly. So I think we can work this up a little bit and make it better.
Your large number actually was pretty close one time, had a public hearing on putting up a cell tower at Bethesda School. I ran that hearing. We had 128 people sign up to talk, 127 said no, and one said yes. I remember that very, very well. But the other thing with people who live outside of our district, many of our teachers live outside of the district, and that's, I think, a consideration that we need to look at. And there, I think our teachers do have the right to come and address us. That is, that is important. Sometimes people are confused that there isn't a dialogue because there are some municipalities where there's dialogue. We don't really allow for the dialogue. We want to listen to what your input is, but then we take that input, as Corey was saying, we process that, and then that, a lot of times, comes out in our committee discussions. And we do make ourselves available in other manners, phone calls, emails, and we do get a lot of those too. So we do appreciate input from our constituents, we take it very seriously. I'll be interested in Bill to see how your, how the discussion goes. Are there any other points in this policy that you feel that you want to get some input on from?
These, some of the comments are exactly what we're looking for because those are issues that have been raised to us as, on the committee, and those are some of the items that are in the policy that very possibly should be adjusted accordingly to, you know, to our wants here. So I don't have anything additional right now. We do talk about, again, the options are, you know, available that we could allow for some of the, like, for instance, the teachers, we know, we know those teachers have a right to talk to us about it, and maybe there's a particular way we can adjust the policy to adjust, allow for that. Right now, theoretically, they aren't supposed to be doing it by our policy. I did not say we're not going to allow it, I'm just saying we're going to fix it, okay?
Kurt?
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Montiel's comments about supporting letting outsiders speak. And the issue is, is that quite often you can't, you can't arrange for people to speak at a committee meeting because it's not on the agenda, right? Agenda gets set by the leadership. So having that three minutes, if you want someone to actually provide their input to the board, they're free for that three minutes to come in and provide that input, which is actually what we did that night when the school resource officer issued, which reflects kind of on what happened earlier. And in fact, some of the people who spoke tonight, if you go back and look at the video from that meeting, you'll see it kind of addresses some of the issues that you've expressed concerns about tonight. And that's the advantage of having people coming in from the outside and inviting them for that three-minute talk. And the other thing I like about encouraging people to come and talk to us is you get a really positive feeling about the school district when you come to a school board meeting waiting for your chance to talk because you got bright lights, you got employee recognition, you got all these wonderful things that are said before you get up. So no matter how angry you're coming in or however, whatever issue you might have, if that happens to be the situation, you get a good feel for all the good things that are happening in our district before you get up and speak. I remember when I wasn't on the board, that was something I always enjoyed, was watching bright lights before I spoke.
Bill, there is something that I'd like to make sure that you have a chance to discuss at committee. There are kind of two sort of sets of topics, if you wish. Ones that pertain to the agenda of the evening, and ones that pertain to virtually any topic. We allow people to cover any topic. Should we be splitting those up into two different presentations?
That's one of the things we will be including in our conversations. We have talked about other districts and techniques that are used. Sometimes they do exactly that, split it into two different parts, ad random type things that come up. Agenda things that are coming.
There are some districts that only say you will discuss agenda items only.
We are aware that, we haven't made any decisions, but we're.
Right. Bring it up in the discussion. The other thing that, just, this is more of an awareness thing for our audience, and you might want to go online to read the policy. The chairperson of the committee should hold the comments to about 30 minutes. Now, the chairperson can override that. The chairperson can also make it shorter. The chairperson can also say, "Hey, this is out of hand, and we're going to stop all comments right now." So there's a great amount of flexibility that is given to the chairperson, but there are many guidelines within the policy to help guide the chairperson. So we have a tendency to be a little bit more lax at the committee level, a little more formal at the full board level.
That's exactly why I encourage everybody to read those policies before we go any further with this, because there's stuff in there you may or may not be aware of, and there's stuff in there you may or may not want there.
Yes, yes.
That's for the next meeting.
Anything else on this item?
That item?
To discuss? Okay, Bill.
Okay, two others. The next one is policy 8462 Child Abuse and Neglect, and guidelines, AG 8462 Child Abuse and Neglect Threats Violent. child abuse and neglect, threats of violence, the guidelines. Policy committee discussed adding language about the annual training for staff at its November meeting, we'll be bringing that forward. The training requirement is in the state statute referenced in the policy. This item will be, has been adjusted and we'll be bringing up at the next policy meeting for possible bringing forward to the board.
And anything that people would like to have the committee look at closer on this?
Okay. Last item, the board docs. I guess you could say the committee is taking themselves as a beta test, using board docs for, at this point, for getting the policies and storing the policies as they're updated. So we have reviewed the two types of board doc software that are available for board and committee agendas. We haven't made any decisions on it. We'll be, we have tried a meeting where we didn't have any paper, we did it all through the board docs concept. Generally, it worked. We're getting there. We'd like to have the tech, we will be having a meeting with the technology and policies, a combined collaborative meeting to review a formal presentation, very possibly in January. And at this point, that concludes the meeting. Our policy committee meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 17th, at 4:00 PM here.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Moving on to our technology committee given by Ms. Voight.
We have not met and as Bill just pointed out, we are hoping to have a kind of a trial run exposure for the tech committee to sit in on a policy committee attempting to go paperless and then after that have a meeting to be able to further discuss the board docs concept.
I'm glad both of your committees are working on, work out the kinks first and
We've thought about it, yeah.
All right.
And we'd like to invite everybody else to come to that meeting as well to be able to see how it works, since they would, will all be involved in it once it happens.
Thank you, Diane. Moving on to finance and facilities, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one action item, three information items, and one discussion item on the agenda this evening. Our action item is the approval of restriction of fund balance for health claims. The committee was updated on the need to set aside the health insurance claim reserves to provide financial stability to the district's self-funded health insurance program. This action item will return the reserves to $5,772,252, which was the previous level before nearly $900,000 of reserves was needed in the 2017, 2018 year due to high claims. The committee approved the increase in the restriction on the general fund balance for future health claims that exceeded budgeted expenses in the amount of $453,514, thereby bringing the total amount of restricted reserves to $5,772,252 and ISO move.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Given by Corey. Discussion? Kurt?
So maybe Sherry can help with this. I'm interested in the accounting for this reserve, healthcare reserve balance, because anything that we pay for healthcare should be self-funded through the premiums that the district and employee, employee pay together, is that correct? So this reserve should be funded by those premiums. It shouldn't be funded from our general fund balance.
Reserve is there so that if we have a high fluctuation in claims, it's about 3.5 months of claims, I believe. So the reserve is there in months where we may have claims before we've collected premium and it allows for the fluctuation. So it isn't, excuse me, it isn't necessarily funding the claims, that is happening out of the premium, but in some years when we have higher claims, we may have to tap into that balance to help pay for it. And then years where we have better claims, like the money that we're suggesting gets moved out of there, last year we had a better claims experience and so there was
That doesn't solve my accounting problem.
You might want to talk a little bit about the liability account?
No, it doesn't solve the accounting problem. Let me, let me ask this again, maybe I'm not seeing, if, if we have an excessive claims year, okay, we need to have the cash, right? So we take it from the general fund or from the fund balance or reserve fund, whatever you want to call it, to, to address that claim. Somehow or another, the general fund should be paid back. It shouldn't be a shift of general fund dollars into healthcare claim dollars. It should be paid back because it's, it's part of the healthcare thing and I want to make sure that that's the case. Instead of it seeming like we're going to take an excessive claim and just suddenly pay from our general fund balance when it should be being paid by insurance premiums, which is 80, 90% of the district anyway, but I want to make sure it's properly accounted for from the cost of healthcare, the way you would normally be for a self-funded plan that's a segregated account, more or less, instead of mixing funds between the general fund and the healthcare fund.
Yes, and so to try to address that, this isn't necessarily mixing funds, this is just saying this was funds that we had available from excess of last year and now we're saying we want to put it back aside and put it back into the claim reserve that we had to tap into before. Now we've had a better claims year experience and so that money was available from last year, it went into fund balance, it was part of the money that increased our fund balance at the end of last year and now it's just asking for permission to take that same money and just put it into a separate fund balance account that says it can only be used for claims.
I, I just want to make sure that it's a segregated account because we're paying premiums, we, us and our employees are paying a premium that's supposed to be self-funding healthcare entirely. It's not supposed to come from the general fund, which is 100% us, to build up that payment, instead of a shared cost between us and our employees. So
And that's accurate. And as Mr. Como said, we have a separate account, which is a liability account, which is where the daily accounting comes in and that's where the money is collected from the employees and the district to pay for the claims and that's where it comes out of. But this is just there to help with the fluctuations in cash flow.
Okay, that's fine. Then if our claims go up, then technically the premiums would probably go up the following year to help cover that, is that correct?
Correct. The premiums would go up, plan design would change, something would happen to help offset that.
Well, again, I guess it's probably in this liability account, but we have to make sure that, that we're always paying back to general fund what is due. If we take from the general fund, we have to pay it back out of the premium portion, okay?
That is correct.
It's all fun 10 money, though.
Right.
So it's all fun 10 money, but we keep track of it the way you're suggesting we keep, keep track of it, we're doing that, Kurt. Yeah. Does that make sense?
I would think that's what we're doing, otherwise our auditor should be saying something.
That is what we're doing.
I think we've achieved what you're, you're requesting. Would you agree?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, it all goes into the general fund and then some funds are restricted for the fund balance and then the rest go in the liability account.
Yeah, and we closely look at that, the revenues and the expenses, 100% associated with health insurance, Mr. O'Brien. So I think we're accurate there. Other questions, discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving the restriction of the fund balance for health claims in the addition to that.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Amanda Ruddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Mr. McCaffrey?
My first information item this evening is the referendum finance plan. Michelle Weiberg from PMA Financial presented on the details of the second and final draw of $15 million on the successful November 2018 referendum. We are looking at a repayment schedule of less than 10 years while still maintaining the second lowest mill rate for the Waukesha County school districts. The report also included a possible repayment approach that could be, that could shorten the amortization debt by two to three years. My second information item is the monthly budget update. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budget limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is also operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds. And my third and final information item is the referendum project update. Darren Clark updated the committee on the upcoming referendum products, projects at the middle schools and at Waukesha South. Bid documents are being released in January on the 2nd and the 6th and the provided set of expectations for the relocation of the current furniture from Butler and Horning Middle Schools.
Mr. McCaffrey, just one fact I want to inject into the referendum financing plan. So we're looking at 10 years or less, we can reduce that by perhaps have everything paid off in seven years. And just I wanted to have our audience have a comparison, most districts take 20 years to pay back a referendum like this. So we've been very aggressive at that, we want to save our constituents as much money as possible in interest and we wanted to get this, this paid off as, as quickly as possible. So I, I wanted to just share that comparison, Mr. McCaffrey, to, to a typical time range.
All right, I have one discussion item on the agenda this evening. That discussion item is the tax increment financing for Town of Waukesha Tax Incremental District Number One, presentation that we received from representatives from the Town of Waukesha. The committee discussed the tax increment financing plan provided by the Town of Waukesha for Tax Incremental District Number One. Two representatives from the Town of Waukesha were present to answer questions in regards to the reasoning behind the TID and the projects involved. And this will be a discussion item if anybody wants to discuss it.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I, I had a chance to watch the FNF meeting before coming to the board meeting tonight. Just a couple of things I guess I'd like to say. I'm a town resident. We, we, we benefit greatly as a school district from the Town of Waukesha, the City of Waukesha and all the other municipalities and Town of Brookfield, Town of Beawak. We have like
Seven municipalities. We have seven municipalities that we tap into.
And Town of Waukesha, I think, is the second biggest one contributor next to the, next to the city of Waukesha, right? When I look at the project itself, over half the project is based on homes that are located on Sunset Drive being acquired and redeveloped into senior living facilities with no name developer for the project. Nor do we even know if the homeowners have been able to weigh in, do they actually, what would be the price to buy them, do they want to be bought, those things. That's normally not our issue, but normally what comes before us in these TIFs, and as Mr. Como said, I was on FNF for a number of years, Mr. Warren, who was our FNF chairman, was a representative for a number of years, and Mr. Como was a representative for all the time I was on FNF and I guess right now our representative happens to be Mr. Gray. We've approved almost every single TIF, TID that's come before us because we're just one of five votes. And the only time when we haven't approved that I recall was the most recent one for the baseball fields that the city wanted. And the city was very unhappy when we didn't come down on their side. So we didn't make any friends with the city when we said no, we didn't make any friends at all and I think they haven't been as nice to us as they used to be when we used to say yes to everything. But, you know, I think we agreed with the county and we made the right decision that it wasn't the way a TIF or a TID should be run. This one here seems to fall in the same type of category. It, it seems to be a TIF or a TID for a purpose different than having a TIF or a TID. Now, does that really matter to us that much? Maybe not, but it, it doesn't seem to be a well-fought-out TIF and TID because usually you have a developer, let's take, the example they gave at the meeting was Fox Run Century, which needs to be redeveloped. They have a developer there, they're just buying the land. It's all planned out, there's a plan for it. It needs to be done. It's all in place. Here you're talking about a senior living center that's going to be next to railroad tracks. Not my idea of the greatest senior living center, you know, and having to take out homes to do it. And that's over almost half the economic gain on the value property. The other thing is that when the Town of Waukesha talks about, you know, being friendly to developers or economic development, they don't have that history with the school district of Waukesha. The Larson property, we had to, we took us 20 years to sell that property. We had two developers come in, both after putting in a lot of work, were turned down for rezoning that property for development. That would have added economic value and property value to the Town of Waukesha. That land's still sitting idle today because that developer can't get approval from the Town of Waukesha. So if you're going to do a TIF or a TID and it's going to be a developer-friendly TIF or TID, have a track record of being developer-friendly and show a really legitimate plan, master plan, that goes with it. Not a sudden TIF or TID because we're trying to protect our boundaries, because it doesn't matter to this board whether that boundary's in the City of Waukesha or the Town of Waukesha. That's not our issue. We're not here to help you protect your boundaries. So I'm welcome, I'd be glad to hear from any of the aldermen or town, town people.
Supervisors.
Yeah. I know a couple, I know three or four of them, they're all good guys, but their history with the school district of Waukesha has not been positive over the years and their history with developers has not been positive. So if they want me to give a positive recommendation for the project, I encourage them to call me and explain to me why this should be, something that we should be moving for.
Other comments, discussion? First TID for the Town of Waukesha. Corey?
Very briefly, and I appreciate Mr. O'Brien's comments for the second time tonight, I'll agree with him almost full-heartedly. Myself and Mr. Como, I'm sorry, spoke quite extensively at the FNF, or they, the meeting, FNF meeting, there was a good presentation. I just, if people are interested specifically what I spoke about or Mr. Cuomo spoke about, you can go with the video and listen to it. I don't, I don't want to spend 15 minutes repeating myself, but I echo your sentiments. Doesn't make sense to me, so that's all.
Others? Comments, questions? Okay, Pat?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting was, will be on January 13th, 2020, at 5:30 in the boardroom. And, Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to our teaching and learning committee, given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last teaching and learning committee meeting was held on December 3rd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. There is one action item and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The one action item was for the approval of Baking for Culinary, a WCTC transcripted course with emphasis on pastry and baking. This new course will be part of the Culinary Arts Pathway, following Culinary Arts or Chef Foods. This puts the school district of Waukesha at 14 classes that have transcripted credit with WCTC. On a four to zero vote, the teaching and learning committee approved the Baking for Culinary course as presented. We request board approval and ISO move.
Is there a second to that? Given by Mr. Baumgart? Comments?
Well, quite simply, everything they, they presented to us, Dan and Molly and one of the teachers was there as well, I believe, anyway, was very positive. It's going to work well with, again, the transcripted credit, kids working on the curriculum that comes out of WCTC. It just made a lot of sense and it fits, I guess I'm going to say it this way, it fits with the current generation of kids that are very interested in this kind of work, probably because they watch a lot of it on TV, but it's
Sure.
Now they want to do it. So it, it fit. There was really nothing that was even very controversial about doing, there was nothing controversial about doing this, period.
And it was really being driven partially by the community members, our businesses. There's a demand, a high demand for people in this workforce, in this area of the workforce, so.
It's true.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving the Baking for Culinary, WCTC transcripted course.
Amanda Ruddy?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Greg?
The one discussion item was the Wisconsin Forward Exam Data from last spring. Amy Rebel, our data and assessment liaison, reviewed our district-wide 2019 Forward Exam results.